I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility has been designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boyle, I'll address the board under correspondence, but Mr. Boyle is excused. Mr. Durado?
Here.
Mr. Husser's been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse has been excused, Mr. Seaman's been excused, and Mr. Everett's been excused. Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and our troops.
Chief?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is we have some minutes we have to approve. We have the minutes of the special meeting on July 20th, I'm sorry, 29th, 2019. Eligible voters are Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, yes, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Schneider, and Deputy Mayor O'Donnell and myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolution, uh, motion carries, minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the regular meeting of August 1st, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve August 1st, 2019 minutes.
Have a second?
That was the chief?
Chief.
Thank you. Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, minutes are approved.
Thank you. Last one is the regular meeting of August 15th, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Schneider, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself.
I move approval of the regular meeting August 15th, 2019.
Thank you.
Second?
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, minutes are approved.
Okay, thank you. Correspondents?
Yes, I had an email from Mr. Boyle who has resigned his position with the Planning Board, and he asked to thank all the members and say it was a pleasure working with everyone. I also have Frank Akazano here. He is the attorney for Smith Family Properties, which is on tonight's agenda, and he would like to come up and address the board, ask them to take jurisdiction, and get carried to our next meeting.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, Frank Akazano, on behalf of Smith Family, I understand you've got a rather crowded agenda. I'm sorry, how about now? Got a crowded agenda. I understand that it's relatively unlikely that we're going to get reached, although our application's not going to take that much time. I'd ask the board tonight to at least take jurisdiction based upon the notice that I previously served and carry the application to the 19th without further notice.
Steve, any problem taking jurisdiction on this?
Um, no, but the board has, we have forums available, and if you can carry it on notice.
Okay.
You want it carried or?
And when do you want to be carried to?
To the 19th, the next meeting.
December 19th.
Is that okay?
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
No, we're just going to carry.
Okay. Making an announcement, if you're here for case number P-SP-1041A, Smith Family Properties, involving Block 49, Lot 7, 289 Squonkum Road, this application, the hearing on it, is being carried on notice to the board's next regularly scheduled meeting, December 19th, 7:00 PM, in this room. There'll be no further mailed or published notice. So, Smith Family Properties LLC hearing, carried to December 19th, 7:00 PM, this room.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. I also passed out a list of possible meeting dates for next year. Usually, I plan our reorg for the first Thursday following the first of the month. However, the council is not having their reorg meeting until January 7th, which means the board can either have their first meeting on the 9th, which is not, that is, the second Thursday of the month, and then have their regularly scheduled one on the 16th, or you can go the 16th and the 30th, or just have one meeting that month. It's up to you guys.
All right. We're really jammed up on the agendas, all right? I feel that there's a need for two meetings in January, so we can eat, plus, I'm not available on the 9th, because that's my other week that we normally don't meet. I would prefer if we would go for the 16th and the 30th. The only downside is that means that the first meeting in February is the week after the 30th, and then we'll be back onto our every-two-week schedule.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we have, if our scheduling is going to be that ambitious, maybe we should schedule the 16th and the 23rd now, even possibly schedule a 30th meeting. It can always be canceled if we don't need it, but this way, everyone, we can notice the public, and we won't be scratching for another date in January if we find ourselves in that position.
So you want to schedule three meetings, dates in January?
Well, I think if we have the business before us, we have no choice but to address it.
Three meetings in January?
If we do, if we do that, then we're going to have the 16th, the 23rd, the 30th, and February 6th.
If I might, you can always advertise that you're having them, and if nothing's scheduled or carried to that date, you just don't have to have the meeting, but at least they're on our calendar. It's up to you.
Rob, what do you think? Paul?
What are the dates?
Chief?
I'm good.
And, okay, okay. All right, so we'll do that, Eileen. We'll schedule for the 16th for our reorg meeting, the 23rd, the 30th, and...
And then at reorg, we'll decide the rest of the dates.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. And that's all I have. Anything else I have, I email to the members, though.
February 6th. So we'll do the 16th, the 23rd, and February 6th.
It's always be canceled.
And we'll decide at the reorg meeting where we are. Okay?
Perfect.
All right. Anything else on the correspondence?
No, thank you.
With that being said, we'll move on to memorialization of resolutions. First one is case number SD 2986, K. Hovnanian Four Seasons at Colts Farm. Resolution granting preliminary and final site plan and preliminary and final major subdivision approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, and myself.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, that's a typo. It's actually preliminary subdivision and preliminary site plan.
Oh, we only granted them preliminary?
Yes, they're coming back for a final.
Okay. So noted. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve case number SD 2986.
Memorialize it.
Second.
Yeah. And Chief Motion, Mr. Schneider, second.
Thank you. Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized, and we don't have the other resolution, so we'll carry that to the next meeting.
Correct. All right. First item on the agenda for submission waivers is case number SD 29, I apologize, SD 2988. John Schleter, it's a minor subdivision. It's the application of John Schuler as applicant and owner seeking minor subdivision approval to create one new building lot on premises known as Block 114, Lot 6, 24 Freehold Street, uh, Free Wood Street, I'm sorry. Thank you, Chief. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please step to the podium.
Yes.
Does he have to be sworn?
We're going to swear in Ms. Newman?
Yeah, also.
Ms. Newman, do you swear from that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Let's swear him in, just, Steve?
Are you Mr. Schuler?
Yes. Mr. Schuler, do you swear from that any testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Schuler, what we normally do on these applications, and for anyone here, this is just to deem the application complete. We are not hearing his application tonight. What we normally do is we defer to our engineer to see if she has any issues with granting you the waiver to deem the application complete. With that being said, Ms. Newman?
Yeah, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an October 22nd review letter where the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item 3. There are two waivers being requested, one being a 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis and the other being details for construction of any onsite improvements. At this time, this is an application for a minor subdivision. One of the lots has existing improvements on it. The other one will be proposed for future development. So given that there's no proposed development at this time, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
And it would simply be for the granting of the subdivision when we hear the application?
That is correct.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Grant this submission waiver.
On second? Thank you.
Either Deputy Mayor or Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is case number SP 1052, Monmouth Commerce Center. It's preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variances, and if you want to read all about all the information, it's on the agenda. Counsel?
Good evening. Merrill Gonchar, Sills, Commiss and Gross, representing the applicant this evening. My understanding that this evening, the board was prepared to proceed with the objector's testimony. We had completed our testimony, subject to our right to rebuttal, recall for rebuttal or redirect based upon other testimony that might be entered. We understand that we will be given a substantial portion of this evening. We appreciate the adjustment to the agenda. I guess we need to have a discussion also about when we will next be here, when the matter will next be called.
All right. I'm going to let your application go, so the public understands the applicant has wrapped up their case, that the opposition attorney will now be given opportunity to put his case on the record, and once he's done with his testimony, or his witnesses' testimony, and the applicant has cross-examined his witnesses, and you can ask, the public can also ask questions of his witnesses, when all that is complete, my intent is to then open up this meeting so that you can comment on this application. Because we are going to hear our master plan tonight, that we have to move on that, I will give you to about 9:30, quarter to 10:00, and then we'll halt the application, all right? So once we get to that point, and I can figure out where you're going to be in January, then we'll figure out a date. Okay? I can't get you on the December 19th agenda.
You could tell just by my leaning forward on the desk that that was my next question?
Yeah. No, it's just, it's a full agenda now. I can't get you on, so you're going to go into January.
Okay, so I will ask the question and put it in the record. We would appreciate the board's consideration of a special meeting before the end of the year to try to wrap this up with the players staying in place. I don't know if there's any changes, but we would ask for the board's consideration of a special meeting even after the 19th. If that could be accommodated, we would appreciate it. We understand.
I will take that under consideration, and we'll discuss it later on.
Thank you.
Okay? Mr. Bossman?
Can we just confirm, we have in fact re-noticed for this hearing. We've submitted an affidavit. We also, so we would ask the board to acknowledge that. Also, we had submitted an item, an additional item, sorry, I didn't mean to interfere, but I just realized for housekeeping matters. I note that the soils testing, which had been submitted early on as part of the, some of the materials that had been submitted, we have isolated out the items that were raised at the, at the time of the last meeting, and we have resubmitted that as a separate report, pulled out of the other things that had been submitted. We have had further testing done if there's a requirement. I think just to address the issue that had been raised with our submission, you'll recall that there was a question of whether there was a requirement because this property had previously been used for something that was asserted to come within the definition of, I think, agricultural use? It's our position that that provision doesn't apply, because if you read the language of the section, it speaks to property that had previously been used for agricultural purposes and that are going to be used with, where children will be on the site or have direct access to it. So it's our position that under the language of your own ordinance, what's contemplated is not this kind of application. Obviously, this is not somewhere where children will be regular visitors or will have direct access to soils. Notwithstanding that, we had done the testing, we had made some earlier submissions, we asked our consultants to reconfigure the report just to isolate it down to the items that were required in that report. We have done further testing, and we can make that submission, but it is our position that we don't understand the provision to relate to this kind of development. So, you've seen the items, they're noted in the list, okay? So I just wanted to, for as a matter of housekeeping.
Okay. Before we move forward, Steve, have they re-noticed, and is it a valid renotice?
I'm looking to Eileen, yes, they have valid renotice.
And it's in order.
And the notice...
Do we need to mark this soil report, this reconfigured soil report?
I think that you're very efficient...
I already marked it as A 33.
Right. It's already listed in the newest set of exhibits, the newest list of exhibits.
Okay.
It was submitted, I think, on the 22nd.
And Mr. Bossman has a copy of this report?
Yes. I sent it to him. I sent it to him.
Yeah, yes, we received it. The board secretary signed it to me.
Okay. So is there any reason, Steve, why the, Mr. Bossman can't proceed with his case?
No reasoning, but he may proceed.
I have one question, just for you, for the rec, just, Craig Bossong, Florio Perucci, Steinhardt, and Capelli, on behalf of the Citizens Group Hope, the only question I have before counsel leaves the table is, there was some requests by the board at the last meeting for some additional traffic information related to other intersections, and I just want to know whether they, any of that was submitted to the board?
We have not submitted additional traffic information.
Okay. So that's, I'll just note that, and that's fine.
So noted on the record.
We've reserved our right to bring back a witness. We can hear traffic testimony, so there may be other redirect or, you know, or rebuttal that we'll, we will consider at that time. We also did note, and I trust that Mr. Bossong also saw, there have been, we probably on our third or fourth memos from some of the board, some of the consulting boards or, I don't know what you call them, other committees of the town, and we would like to, maybe I use objection, or discuss those later. We don't want to interfere with this since we'll continue to deal with those. We keep getting new ones, committee reports, even though they're based on the same plans, so...
From township committees?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I have no objection to that.
So we'll raise that, but we don't want to, they have their witness, and we can address that separately.
Fine.
I will give up the table.
All right, thank you.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you give one to her?
No. No, we haven't proceeded. Well, there's a... Yeah, we... There's plenty of copies.
I'll get you one.
Apologize, I forgot to pull one off to the stack for you.
They need a copy. That's what I mean, there are five different exhibits or whatever. Yeah. And we're already up to 04 for him, because he left. No, this will be 04.
Okay, thank you. Once again, Craig Bossong, Florio Perucci, Steinhardt, and Capelli, on behalf of the Citizens Group known as HOPE, I have a expert this evening, Mr. Joseph Fischinger from NV5, who I offer, qualify as an expert for testimony this evening.
In what field?
Traffic engineering.
Sir, we're going to swear you in? Sir, do you swear from that any testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
And give us your business address?
Sure. It's Joseph Fischinger, F-I-S-H-I-N-G-E-R. The company is NV5 Incorporated, 7 Campus Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Fischinger. Can you please give us the benefit of your educational background?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University, and a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey as well as six other states. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer, and while my testimony tonight will be limited to traffic engineering, I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Been doing traffic engineering for a little over 20 years, the first 10 years in private practice preparing traffic impact studies that I'm sure you've seen before then. I spent about seven years on the public side as Somerset County's traffic engineer, doing board reviews for their planning board as well as design projects, and then for the last three and a half years or so, I've been back in private practice doing a combination of developer testimony and board reviews similar to the position Jim takes with this board. Some of the boards I represent regularly are Montgomery, Morris, Bloomfield, Westfield, Florham Park, Montclair, I can keep going with that.
No, it's okay. We'll accept his credentials and consider him expert in traffic engineering.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. Now, Mr. Fischinger, you've been here during the course of the applicant's testimony?
Yes, and the meetings, I haven't been in person. I've had an opportunity to watch the videos after the fact.
Okay, and so, and you've listened to all the testimony that's been provided?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and do you have, I'm going to start with any comments you have to the testimony and what you want to present to this board in relation to your analysis of the traffic situation?
Sure. So I've handed out a packet of exhibits. I think there was a little confusion. I started with 01, and I believe we're up to 04, so I'll defer to your attorney how you want to relabel this, if you want to label the entire, your packet as one number.
I think it would be easier, since you've identified each as a separate exhibit, let's start with, what you've marked as exhibit 01, let's call that exhibit O-4, and then we'll, as you introduce, we'll mark and identify each one.
We'll remark each one. Okay. Okay, so...
Regarding to the exhibits?
Please.
Thank you.
Merrill Gonchar, Sills, Commiss, representing the applicant. What I'd like to ask is, can you explain, and we may have to do the objections on an individual basis, you've identified these as exhibits, is there new data in here, counts or other things that are not simply highlighted versions or restatements of the information that we presented?
The, throughout the exhibits, it's a combination of both. There is some reiterations of existing data as well as new count data.
Our position would be that that information should have been submitted in advance. One of the reasons that we were going through dates, if you recall, while we couldn't continue in November, were concerns about the ability of the objector to get a, get documents in 10 days in advance. The matters were moved. We ended up in December on the 3rd, and now the 5th.
Counsel, Steve, what's your opinion on this?
Well, ordinarily, the 10-day rule applies usually when an application is going to be first heard. It's not rigidly enforced for continuing hearings. It's really up to the board to determine whether the applicant, the, who, obviously the applicant here should have been given the courtesy of a 10-day advanced review time as would, or the public to these exhibits. It's really not a hard and fast rule. There's no requirement that an objector provide advanced notice, although if that was the agreement that was reached at a prior hearing, then that would be, it would be disappointing if that wasn't followed, but I'm not familiar whether an agreement was reached to provide advanced notice.
There was no agreement reached. It was actually specifically reiterated to us by Mr. Cuchero that there is no requirement for us to submit exhibits 10 days prior.
Well, we would put on the record that we don't believe that that's the law, and we also think that as a matter of courtesy, we were not, not even 10 days, we're being given new counts this evening, which were not submitted, were not available for us to identify and have our traffic consultants review in advance. So while objector's counsel made the point of saying he did not receive the soils report from us, we did file it in accordance with law. It was there 10 days in advance, and he was able to find it. We have not been given the same courtesy.
So let me, let me...
And we gave a question, did he bring his witness back so that we can have our cross-examination effectively?
I agree, I agree with that. I was going to offer that as a remedy to this. This application is going to be carried, all right?
Right.
This application is going to be carried, all right? And I agree with counsel that I would like to have your expert come back so that she has the opportunity to cross-examine it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
So starting with what I had marked as Exhibit 01, which I guess will be Exhibit 04, I wanted to go through a number of items and my review of the traffic study that I identified. The first one, as it relates to Exhibit 01, is regarding the trip generation. I'm sure you've heard the.
Sorry, sir, when you say 01, you mean 04?
I'm sorry, 04.
Okay. And can you, for each one of these documents, when you're about, can you identify it for the record, what it is, so that we can keep a good record of all the exhibits?
Of course. So the, what is called Exhibit 04 is entitled ITE 10th Edition Trip Generation Rates for 1,242,102 square foot warehouse, land use code 150. It's prepared by my office dated October 9th of this year. And the subsequent pages to this exhibit are sheets printed out of the ITE 10th Trip Generation Manual, which substantiate the data provided in this table. So as I started to mention, the first item I want to bring up is the trip generation for the development. I'm sure, as you've heard millions of times, the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And what I've provided in this exhibit are, for land use code 150, which is the warehousing code, four different options of peak hour trip generation for a warehouse of this size. The yellow one, which is highlighted, is what was used in the applicant's traffic study. Their numbers are straight out of ITE and match my calculations. However, there are three other possibilities that they could have picked with regard to the trip generation for this site. The way that, if you're not familiar with it, there's a peak hour for the adjacent street traffic and that of the, peak hour of the generator. The first two on this table being adjacent street traffic and the second set being the generator. What that allows you to do is split that if a type of development has a peak hour outside of the traditional morning and evening street peak. A school is a very good example of where the peak hour of the generator is different than the street peak. The school lets out at 2:00 or 3:00 p.m. The roadway typically peaks around 5:00 p.m. So, and you can see from this table, there are varying amounts of trip generation for each of the four sites. And as far as whether they use adjacent street traffic or peak hour of generator, while the peak hour of generator numbers are higher, I agree with the applicant in that regard that they should be using the peak hour of adjacent street traffic. However, what I believe would be a more appropriate and more conservative trip generation rate would be to use the average rate numbers, which as you can see are higher than what they used in their study. The average rate takes all of the various studies in the, for this particular, averages the rates together, where the fitted curve tries to fit them in a best-fit equation that usually allows for, on a much larger development economies of scale. What the issue in this case is, we have, as the applicant has testified multiple times, there is no definitive user. They don't know whether it's going to be 200 small units or one large user occupying the entire complex. So in my opinion, they should have been using the higher average rate trip generation because they do not know what the user is going to be or how big any particular user is going to be in it. Also, because they have so many access points, they have five different access points into the site, this site can behave as five smaller developments. So in that regard, I believe that the trip generation that they used in the study underestimates the traffic that this site could generate because there are so many unknowns with regard to what can be in this site. And I want to move on to what I'll mark as Exhibit 05, what I had earlier marked as Exhibit 02, and this is a table entitled Trip Generation Comparison. It's a colorized version of an exhibit provided by the applicant, I believe, back in June. And the subsequent sheets behind it are, again, the excerpts from the Trip Generation Manual that back up these individual numbers. And the ones I want to raise your attention to are the ones that I have highlighted in yellow, starting with land use code 140, which is manufacturing, and point out the numbers for the Saturday peak hour. As Mr. Taylor testified, that these were the numbers straight out of the ITE manual, and in that he's correct, and I have the paperwork to back that up. But I want to point out, just in the magnitude, that they're saying that 635 vehicles on a Saturday peak hour, which is higher than either the morning or the evening peak hours. And if you look at the first sheet beyond the table, that is the peak hour trip generation for a Saturday, and you'll notice there is one data point. And the reason there is only one data point is we typically don't count this type of use on a Saturday because it's usually closed. So I want to point out that the numbers provided for that peak hour are not realistic, they're not practical, and should be discounted because most manufacturing uses aren't even open on Saturdays. To expect or inform the board that it would be generating more traffic than it would during the weekday peak hour is just not realistic. Moving on to land use code 710, general office, you see a similar situation. While the numbers are not as high as the morning and evening peaks, we have the same situation. There are very few data points for office buildings on a Saturday, I believe it's three. The trip generation here is based on a very limited data set, and again, is not reasonable. It's not credible because most office buildings are closed on Saturdays. And then I want to spend a little time on land use 720, which is the medical dental office use. While, again, these numbers are straight out of the ITE formulas, a 400,000 square foot medical facility is not dental, medical and dental offices. At that size, you're talking about a regional hospital. There are no, there are no ITE study numbers for medical office over approximately 100,000 square feet. So again, well, if you did have 400,000 square feet of medical office, it could generate those numbers. From a practical standpoint, you're not, you just can't have that much. You're not going to have, there's only so many podiatrists and dentists you can put in one spot at one time to generate and traffic and be viable. So I think that the, that entire line of the table, everything associated with that use, is not credible information because it just cannot practically be supported economically, and there is no ITE data to match a medical dental office of that size.
I just want to qualify because there was a lot of confusion when this was presented. This application is only for warehousing, land use code 150. Those other three land uses that are presented were only what-if comparisons. They're permitted by the code, but this applicant is not proposing that, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. So just so everyone here understands that, the applicant is not proposing medical, not proposing office, or the third code here, manufacturing.
Agreed. My point was to, so that the board understands that that comparison in these values is not valid.
Right. I just want the public to understand that.
So the next item I want to move to, which I believe would be Exhibit 06, and it's a table titled Peak Hour Traffic Count, Peak Hour Traffic Volume Comparison, CR 547 and Randolph Road. Again, prepared by my office dated October 9th, and there are subsequent sheets behind it that provide the backup details to where these numbers come from.
Just for clarifications, the chart was prepared by your office, not the backup?
Only the backup that's noted as NV5 counts was prepared by my office. So, and what this table is showing, we looked at the intersection of 547 and Randolph Road, which we've all heard quite a bit about already, and I pulled traffic count information from three different sources. The first line was a March 2016 count done by McDonno Ray. That was done as part of the 41 Randolph Road application that was heard a couple years ago and was available to the applicant. They used the trip generation from that study in their study. The second line, which is highlighted in yellow, are the counts from the applicant's traffic study. And then the third line dated May of 2019 was additional counts done by my office at the same intersection. And as you can see from those counts, for the morning peak hour, if you look on the far right to the total, that in 2016 in the morning, we're seeing just over 1,000 cars in the peak hour. They used 827 in their study, and we counted 909. And then you move to the evening peak hour, in 2016, there was 1219. They used 944 when they counted it, and when I counted, I got back up, was back up to 1226. So in my opinion, we've looked at these three different data sources, one conducted by my office and two others from both this application and a previous application of the board. And I know you've heard a lot of testimony back and forth on whether the counts were valid and reasonable, and I wanted to provide this comparison so you can see these three count dates. The 2016 data was not conducted by my office, it was conducted before this application was even considered. And then again, another count in May of this year. And as you can see there, the total numbers for the, used in the applicant's traffic study are lower, considerably lower than what was counted on either side. And for that reason, I don't believe that their traffic counts are representative. Now, I did not do this comparison for every single intersection, not every intersection that's in this study was counted in 2016, and my client has limited resources on the amount of counts we can redo. So we chose this intersection as a key intersection and representative, and based on this information, I believe that the counts that were utilized in their study, they underrepresent traffic conditions in the area. And one thing I would like to point out with our traffic counts, NV5 does not count traffic manually. We use a system called MyoVision, which is a digital video recorder. We have, the intersection is recorded for the peak hours and sent out for processing by a computer. It's not processed by hand, it's processed electronically. That system has been in place for over a decade and is over 99% accurate. Cameras don't have to stop to answer their phone or stop to go to the bathroom or show up at a count late. The cameras, we have an audible trail, we can provide that video if the board would like it, but I have included in my submission the printouts from both, the two reports I cited and my individual traffic counts from that day.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
The comparison, I'm not going to refer to the 16 counts, but the comparison between the 18 counts and the 19 counts, what you're showing is the 18 counts, which is taken from the applicant's traffic study. Is that their raw data or is that their grown traffic volumes?
That is their raw data, straight from what their traffic counter counted.
Okay, but in their report, did they not grow the traffic volume?
I believe Mr. Taylor testified that he adjusted the volumes between intersections and applied a growth factor to get to the no build traffic volumes.
He didn't adjust the existing condition?
I believe he testified that he did.
He did.
He adjusted the volumes to balance them between intersections.
Now, I'm applying, did he, did he apply the one or the 1.5% growth factor from his 18 traffic counts to the 19?
I believe he didn't go for, he used existing for 18 and then used the later buildup. He didn't go to 19, he stayed.
He stayed at 18.
He used 18, and then his next analysis was a future year. I believe he had multiple future years based on what phase of the study.
Okay, thank you.
So before I get into what will be Exhibit 7, I wanted to talk briefly about the trip distribution portion of the traffic study. That's where they assign traffic to the roadway network and decide which movements vehicles turn at, which driveways they leave. One of the first things that Mr. Taylor had stated during his testimony, when they were going back and forth about the Synchron model, is he stated that Synchron was a dynamic traffic model, and I'm paraphrasing in that. In that statement, Mr. Taylor was quite frankly incorrect. Synchron is what's known as a static model. The model is assigned, the only way that the model knows how many cars are turning, which way at which intersection, is the user enters that numbers. If it was a dynamic model, then the computer would figure out what the easiest route would be and assign the volumes to it. That is not the case with the software that he used. He has to manually assign volumes to every movement in the network. So I want to make it clear that what Mr. Taylor said earlier is, was incorrect, that he has to decide which turns are made at each intersection within the model. And then along with that, we, there was a lot of discussion back and forth with the capacity of the intersection at Route 547 and Randolph Road and whether or not vehicles would continue to use that route if it was congested. And again, this is a point where I disagree with Mr. Taylor, that he said that vehicles would continue to turn towards the intersection. I disagree. If there is significant congestion at that stop sign, these, any regular users of this facility would know not to make a left at rush hour towards that intersection and would know to make a right to the site and use a different route to get around that congestion. I believe the board requested that analysis, and I, it's my understanding that it has not been provided to this date, and I do think it is still relevant and that is a piece of information that we just, at this point, we just don't have. And then moving on to what I have marked, and now will be Exhibit 7, is to discuss about the truck restrictions that the applicant has suggested proposing at their, some of their driveways. The first sheet of this is a printout of a section of the NJDOT website entitled Traffic Regulations, Orders of the Commission of Transportation. I printed this one out on October 9th, 2019. The website was last dated, last updated in December of 2011. And the section I have highlighted, which I'll read briefly, basically says, "Legislation that requires municipalities and counties to establish certain traffic controls excluding wait limits without NJDOT review or involvement." What this basically means is in 2008, that legislation, and the full copy of the legislation is appended behind it, divested the state of review of many municipal traffic regulations. If the town wants to put up a stop sign or build a traffic signal, they can do that without requiring approval or review of NJDOT, except with regard to wait restrictions. And wait, where it says wait limits, that means truck restrictions. That if the town wanted to put up a no left turn sign and restrict all vehicles, they can do that without the state's involvement. But if they want to make a wait-specific restriction, it still requires NJDOT approval for that restriction. And that is in contrary to what Mr. Taylor testified. Quite honestly, I don't even believe he was aware of this regulation, and then keep in mind that any truck restriction that would be placed on the driveways of the site in order for it to be enforceable by the township, consistent with Title 39, it would need NJDOT concurrence. And at the very least, I would recommend the board consider, if they want that restriction, that they make concurrence from NJDOT to that restriction a condition of approval and force the applicant to come back here if they cannot get that approval from the state.
In that, your testimony there is in regards to the questions and the requirement the board was looking at, making it a left turn only for trucks exiting the site on the five driveways?
From the five, from the driveways onto Randolph Road. I believe they were only, it wasn't all five, I believe it was only the driveways that would be identified for truck traffic, that they would be restricted to no, I believe it was no right turn, because they wanted to force the traffic to go out to. to force the traffic to go out to Randolph Road and 547 instead of cutting through other areas. So I want to make it clear that there is, that the state must get involved in this restriction in order for it to be enforceable regardless of the geometry that's set up at the intersection. And then next, I want to move on to.
Can I just, can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
Before you move on? According to this, the town could put weight restrictions on Oakland Road, Lakewood Allenwood Road, because the DOT is exempt from reviewing that, correct?
No, actually, no. Weight restrictions are the only thing that the DOT must concur on.
So then, why can't the township have the developer post the no right turn for trucks sign? And according to your logic, that would be enforceable under Title 39?
It would only be enforceable under Title 39 if you got concurrence from the state. A truck restriction is a weight restriction. We, we're saying no trucks, but the restriction would be written by vehicles over a certain weight limit.
Or a certain length.
The way this ordinance is written, it's based on weight. So if you wanted to write a restriction that says trucks or vehicles over, you know, 28 feet, then that, it's possible that could apply. But I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to opine on whether or not the state would consider that a weight restriction or not.
I just want to be clear. You said ordinance. It's a statute, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
State statute.
State.
So I want to move, next I want to move on to my comments on the traffic analysis that was performed. I know there was a lot of it. We were back and forth multiple times, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with it. What is now going to be marked Exhibit 08, which I, my sheet originally said 05, is two printouts from the synchro reports. This was actually from the synchro models that were provided by the applicant. As you can see, highlighted in yellow on the bottom of the sheet, one is marked 4/26/19 existing PM. And then the second is marked 9/30/2019, build for, build phase four PM revised geometry. Both of these are referring to the intersection of 547 and Randolph Road. And I'm going to use these exhibits for a couple of different things. The first one, as you can see, highlighted a little more than halfway up the page, is the heavy vehicle percentage. As part of Mr. Taylor's testimony, he stated that he adjusted the heavy vehicles to account for the additional trucks from this development. And while I've only provided one such expert excerpt, you can go through and check multiple versions of this study, of these reports. And in pretty much every case, the heavy vehicle percentages under existing conditions and full build out of the site are identical. So while Mr. Taylor said he accounted for and adjusted for the additional trucks account of, in his analysis, the numbers don't reflect that. The numbers show that he assumed the exact, existing amount of truck percentages in the future condition. And then the second item I wanted to use these exhibits for, on the full build out number, if you see, highlighted in yellow, the, almost the last line is the 95th percentile Q in vehicles. This is that magic number of how far in the stop sign condition would the intersection at 547 and Randolph back up? And as you can see, that analysis shows it would be a fifth, 95% of the time would be 54 vehicles. And if you do the quick math, assuming 25, just 25 feet per vehicle, you're at over 1,300 feet, which comes on to the applicant's property. And keep in mind that that does not include any trucks in it, because I'm just assuming 25 feet of vehicle, nor does it include an increased adjustment, as I just mentioned, for the trucks associated with this site. So I wanted to make it clear that without any improvements at that intersection, this, during the evening peak hour, the Q will go past their site and pass their first site driveway.
With cars only?
Even, this analysis based on just assuming they're all cars, it will hit their property line. And then we haven't, but on top of that, we haven't accounted for additional trucks in any of those numbers. So then what I want to move to, and the, the third sheet in that exhibit is just a Google map sketch that shows that 300, roughly 350 feet measurement. You can see that it is on to their property. And the next thing I wanted to cover, which will now be known as Exhibit 09, is their planned improvements. As you, as you remember from, I believe, the last hearing, they find, the applicant stated that they would comply with the county's review memo, and the county has stated that they would acquire a signal. The applicant has not provided, to the best of my knowledge, any sort of concept plan for that development. My client wanted to find out what was, what this would actually look like and what it would take. So they are, what is Exhibit 09 is, there's two sheets to it. One is entitled Randolph Road Order of Magnitude Cost Estimates. And the second is a concept plan prepared by my office dated October 10th, 2019, entitled Intersection Improvements at Lakewood Farmingdale Road, CR 547 and Randolph Road. And I'll start with the concept plan first. What this shows is, based on the geometry that was in the applicant's traffic study, based on what they represent, queue lengths should be and the number of lanes they would need, assuming that we would need to have tractor trailers making the turns, these red lines show what the, the new curb line would need to be. And then beyond that, what the anticipated right of way lines would use, would need to be. And as you can see, there is substantial widening that needs to occur at this intersection to make that happen, both from, for just roadway improvements as well as additional right of way to accommodate utilities and other sides, street appurtenances. And you can see from the, the cost estimate, that that is an over $1.2 million improvement. And it's also important to note that this estimate does not include anything for right of way. Our preliminary estimate is that it needs over an acre of right of way to order to accommodate this improvement. And I'm not a right of way expert, so I'm not going to opine on how much that right of way would cost. But that right of way has to be acquired, quite possibly through eminent domain, that someone needs to acquire that property as part of this improvement. And my ultimate point is to make it clear to the board that this is not an overnight improvement, that this is a major undertaking with considerable utility relocations. Our, based on our estimate, nine utility poles need to be moved, that this requires considerable improvements, considerable investment, considerable time in right of way acquisitions, and that that needs to be considered, even if they are agreeing to comply with the county's requirements, that this isn't going to happen overnight. This is a multi-year process. And if the, unless the applicant is willing to agree not to open any of their buildings until this improvement is in place, you're going to be dealing with the traffic at this intersection without the improvement, even if they do agree to pay for it, because it's going to take time, I would imagine, four to five years, if money was no object, in order to acquire all of the property, get all of the required permits and do the required construction. And then the last item I wanted to bring up in the, with the exhibits, which I, is now Exhibit 10, which is, it's a copy of the driveway vehicle circulation exhibit prepared by the applicant. I believe this was the last one that they provided after multiple revisions. And I apologize if it's hard for anyone to read at this scale. In red, I have annotated five different locations that I wanted to point out. Now, after repeated revisions to this plan, and keep in mind that this is a facility that is supposed to be designed specifically to accommodate tractor trailers, there's still locations where there are vehicle conflicts. As you see in location one, if you have a truck turning right into the site and another one turning left out at the same time, in the vicinity of where I have location one circled, their vehicle paths still cross. In location two, you see that a truck turning right into the site needs to cross over the double yellow line into the oncoming lane in order to make its maneuver. Now, if this was a small retail development that saw one truck a week, maybe that's okay. And we've, I've let that, an application I've reviewed, I found that acceptable. This is a trucking facility. This is, they're designed for trucks. And yet, the trucks have to turn into the opposite lane of traffic in order to complete their movement. I mean, you can see, location three, we have the same issue. A truck turning right into the site needs to cross over the double yellow line in order to make its maneuver. Location four, that vehicle has to use the entire width of the driveway to make its turn. Again, these are not occasional movements. This site, as they've said, is designed specifically to accommodate these vehicles, and yet, they're still required to drive into oncoming traffic in order to swing the turn. And again, even, and location five, again, we have the same thing, that a truck, vehicle making that right turn needs to turn into the opposing lane. And also, you see that the car making the left, the truck, I apologize, making the left turn is hugging that bay of trailer parking and then still barely makes maneuvers to stay away from another truck making a right turn. This is a facility that's supposed to be, have trailers being moved back and forth, trucks being moved in and out every day. And yet, there's multiple locations where the circulation just does not provide adequate circulation for a tractor trailer of this size.
And your design vehicles are WB67?
This, this figure was the one provided by the applicant. I believe they used a modified WB67 to what is the largest vehicle allowed on New Jersey roads without a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
But this is their exhibit, not ours.
I'm sorry.
Now, in your professional opinion, the way they have these, these areas designed would be a serious safety concern for the truck movement on the site?
Both safety and circulation concerns, that we want to, if, in order for this site to operate safely and efficiently, the trucks should be able to maneuver without needing to stop for another truck to make their turn. I think that's all I have as far as direct testimony.
So then, last question I have then, in your professional opinion, the applicant's traffic expert testimony in their report, does it accurately represent the impact of this project will have on the site and the town?
No, I do not. I think there, there's a number of issues with it between trip generation, the traffic counts, the distribution and the analysis that do not accurately represent the impacts of this project.
Thank you. Nothing further, Andrew.
Okay. Merrill, do you want to cross this witness?
We have the ability, we would be willing to start, but obviously we.
Yes, you reserve the right to come back. I understand that.
Merrill Gonchar, representing the applicant. Joe, who are you retained by, please?
The same as Mr. Bonson, by Hope.
Okay. And have you been paid?
I, I think that's, can I ask the relevance of that question? That has nothing to do with this, this here.
Do this, this goes to the credibility of the witness?
Steve? Merrill, your question is whether he's been paid by a certain person or paid in general?
Who's been paid, who he has been paid by?
I think he can answer whether. He's received compensation. Whether he has to identify who pays that, I believe, is not relevant.
Well, if he's representing that he is retained by Hope, then I think we do have the right to know if there's someone else behind it. It goes to credibility, competition. There are a number of issues that would make it relevant in recent case law. If he's refusing to tell us who's paying, then that's.
I'll answer the question. You know, my, my office, the retainer agreement, which I, I will object to this line of questioning, but for transparency of the board, the retainer agreement between NV5, is between NV5 and my office. And my office has paid Joe for his testimony here this evening.
Well, we reserve our right then to ask who's paying counsel.
That is a relevant question in the case law as it stands today. I think you're aware of that.
I believe it's a relevant question, but I believe the courts have protected that information from disclosure.
I think that the question of whether there, whether the, there is competition as a motivation opens up that area. There's recent federal case laws, as well as state case law. We'll be happy to present it. Okay. Just waiting for them to quiet down.
Some of these, we're going to wait until our, obviously, till our experts can analyze this. I'm looking at your original number, Exhibit 02, which I think you've renumbered now as 05. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you appearing this evening as a planner?
No, as I stated at the beginning of my testimony, my testimony tonight was limited to traffic engineering.
Thank you. Do you testify as a planner?
Not regularly, no.
Okay. Not when you represent municipalities? You're not retained as a planner?
No, I'm typically retained at, only as a traffic engineer.
Okay. You put that qualification on the record just because?
In transparency that, yes, I am a licensed planner.
Are you a develop, real estate developer?
No, I am not.
Okay. Realtor?
No.
Okay. Are you testifying as an economist?
No.
Okay. Have you reviewed the ordinance? I'm looking, as I indicated, at your Exhibit 05 now. Have you reviewed the, you identified this as, the first page of this rather, as an exhibit that was presented by the applicant's traffic consultant, correct?
That's right, minus the colorization.
Colorization, thank you. And have you analyzed the ordinance to determine, to make the analysis that our witness did with regard to the ability to develop the square footages that are in that exhibit?
No, I did not go back and verify that the, whether or not the building percentages, the building square footages are correct.
Thank you.
Believe me, I'm trusting your applicant, your witness.
Thank you. And our witness, I believe, testified that those numbers were arrived at based upon calculating what could be built based upon the current township ordinance.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Thank you. So your analysis, basically, what you highlighted, I guess you're, you started out by not challenging the numbers. You've agreed that all those numbers accurately reflect what is in the ITE, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Do, so you accept all of those? Your criticism is with ITE's sourcing of the information?
My criticism is that the amount, the information that is based on is a small sample size with regard to manufacturing in general office, that it's too small of a sample size to be realistic for this case.
Okay. But you agree that the information that was presented by the applicant is accurate?
As it is straight out of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, it is.
And with regard to the medical, you indicated that, again, those, the information that's in this document is accurate?
The numbers are per ITE trip generation, yes.
But you, so, and these, again, the 400,000 is what is. But you, so, and these, again, the 400,000 is what is permitted under the ordinance?
For your engineer's testimony, yes.
And you have no reason to question that? You didn't make an independent analysis?
No, I did not.
That leads you to a different conclusion. Thank you. So, your, I think you testified as a traffic consultant that that was not, what were you, was your terminology? That it was not practical? That it wouldn't be built? Are you qualified as a traffic consultant to make an assessment as to whether what the ordinance permits will or won't be built?
In that regard, no, I am not.
Okay. So that was just editorializing, really not based upon any special expertise?
Well, as I did point out, there is not, the, any research for a medical office building is rough, is capped at roughly 100,000 square feet, that there is no...
Based upon...
Based on the information in the ITE Trip Generation Manual, I believe it's, they don't have it page numbered, but it's titled Medical Dental Office Building, Land Use 720, Peak Hour of Adjacent Street Traffic Between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. You can see on that graph...
But that was not your testimony. What I'm questioning is your testimony was not questioning the accuracy of the information in ITE. Your testimony was that it was, I think you questioned the economic viability of a project of that size, and you re-characterized the use. Is that based, do you have the qualifications to do that as a traffic consultant?
That is my professional opinion as a traffic consultant.
That a project is not economically viable, that people, that a developer, no developer would build a project that was permitted under the ordinance?
No, I think, I think you're mischaracterizing the testimony. The testimony was...
I could ask to have it read back.
Was regards to a 400-square-foot medical office is more akin to a regional, the size of a regional office.
I'm questioning whether that's within the expertise of a traffic consultant. That's why I asked if he was an economist, or a Realtor, or testifying as a planner, and what he was basing it on. So, his expertise is limited to traffic, and I think we're getting into the realm of real estate expertise there.
Understood. I will, as I stated before, based on the information provided by ITE, there are no, there is no research on medical office developments in the range of 400,000 square feet. The, the largest ones in the manual are approximately 100,000 square feet.
And yet, the ordinance permits 400,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
To the best of my knowledge. As you pointed out, I did not do that analysis.
Okay. Have you calculated out, and obviously, this is one of the things we would need our expert to do for us, you have provided, and we're seeing for the first time, what you assert to be counts that, that you, or someone from your office undertook at the location. I'm sorry, I'm now looking at, I think we've now made this exhibit 06. That was originally 03. And again, on the first page of this document?
Yes, the counts marked 52319, NV5 counts were both, for both the AM and PM, were performed by my office.
You didn't do them, though? When you say your office?
A technician works in my department installed the camera I discussed earlier to record the intersection, which was then sent out to Maya Vision for processing, and the computer algorithm at Maya Vision generated the counts. That information is included in this exhibit.
And so, would it be safe to say that you, you weren't out at the site? You didn't put the cameras up?
I didn't personally. A technician from my office did.
If asked, could you identify exactly where they were?
Where the camera was placed? Absolutely.
Now, you highlighted the, the 91418 information. Is it accurate to say that not all of the columns, you have northbound and, right, is that what the letters at the top mean?
The columns refer to NV, northbound through, northbound right, westbound left, et cetera.
And is it true that for some of them, the numbers that our count provided were actually higher?
In specific movements, yes.
Okay. So, it was not a matter that the counts that we provided were always lower for all movements?
That's correct. I, as I testified, I was referring to the total number of vehicles processed through the intersection.
All right. And for some of those, they are relatively close, within 10? Would you expect to find that kind of difference doing multiple counts on different dates, 10, 15?
Yes, I would expect it.
In this volume?
Typically, we see daily variations in any given movement can be within 10%.
Okay. And the date that you did yours counts, were there any holidays? Was that a busy travel time?
No, it was, I believe, a Thursday with schools in regular session and, in reasonable weather. There wasn't any, any rain or anything else on that date.
Was that the day before the holiday weekend? Want to check that?
I would have to check the calendar.
Hang on just a second, I just was...
It was the Thursday before Memorial Day weekend. But as I said, schools were in regular session.
Right. But it was a holiday weekend where people might be traveling and taking off in advance of a holiday?
As I stated, it's the Thursday before the holiday weekend.
Now, you, the chairman asked you a question about balancing, that there were adjustments made, that, as I recall the testimony of our traffic consultant, the effect of that was to create a more conservative analysis. They balanced up so that they went to the, the adjustment to the highest levels and balanced them across the network?
I believe that was Mr. Taylor's testimony, yes.
Did you calculate, did you check with making that adjustment whether, in fact, the discrepancy that you've highlighted in yellow remains?
No, I did not. The eyes, these are comparing actual counts taken on the dates they were presented.
Okay. But if the numbers that actually went in to the analysis that was undertaken in the traffic report, if that adjustment raised the numbers, as you sit here now, you're not in a position to say whether the numbers that were used in the analysis that Mr. Taylor performed and are reflected in our report were the same, or were even higher, as I believe they might be, than what you're showing here? So, is that true?
At this point, I don't know if the number, off the top of my head, if the numbers used, the balance numbers used for this intersection were higher than what we're presenting as actual counts. As I stated in my testimony, we counted one intersection. We did not go back and do this analysis at every single intersection within the study area. My point is to provide that there is a reasonable doubt that the counts that were used as the base were not representative. In order to confirm that at every intersection, we would have had to recount every intersection.
Can you just repeat what you just said? You had a basis to believe that the numbers were not accurate?
We wanted to...
What was the basis of that belief?
That they were not...
Well, when you sat and heard his testimony and looked at the report, you hadn't heard testimony yet. So, that was the first time you were hearing it or reviewing it. So, what was it that you knew that the rest of us didn't that led you to believe that his numbers were not accurate?
We were able to look at the, the traffic volumes from both the 2016 counts and the 2018 counts. And quite honestly, in doing my due diligence in reviewing the application, we wanted to confirm if their traffic counts were accurate. That's why we redid it.
That's not what you said. What you said was you had reason to believe, and I'm asking you...
And that reason is when looking at the counts from 2016 versus the counts in your report.
Okay. So, I'll ask you again, if the, do you know if the traffic report that was performed by McDonough Ray upon which, which was based upon these numbers, did they balance the numbers?
That I do not know.
Okay. But you do know that we did balance them?
Yes, that was the testimony of your traffic engineer.
And that the, well, could you determine that from analyzing the traffic report?
Yes, that calculation was provided in the traffic report.
Okay. So it wasn't just the testimony of Mr. Taylor, but in fact, your review of the report confirmed Mr. Taylor's testimony?
That he balanced the volumes in the report, yes.
Okay. And what you cannot tell us, excuse me, what you cannot tell us is whether the numbers in the total column are actually the same in terms of their incorporation into the analysis that the, that our consultant did in the report, whether, in fact, the numbers that were in that were comparable?
I'd, if you want me to wait to do the calculation, I suppose I can. However, I'm sure your expert can provide that information.
Is there a, can you check that? Because I'm advised that the number that was actually used in our analysis, which is the determination that my expert made based upon these counts, were actually 1,071 for the morning peak hour and 1,277 for the PM peak hour. And I will put on the record that I don't know how they got them, but if my traffic consultant told me that, I, I can't calculate it.
and Randolph in the morning, the numbers in the synchro report are total 1,071.
For the, that's the morning peak, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And for the evening peak?
Again, looking at the existing PM level service report, this one is dated 4/26/2019.
Okay. So, at least, to the extent that, and let me understand, your purpose in identifying the, and highlighting the numbers, and let's stay with the morning peak hour for now, the reason for highlighting that is to give the impression that the applicant was using numbers in the report that when put into the analysis to determine impacts, would understate what those impacts were?
Now, my point in highlighting it was to make it clear to the board which numbers I was referring to. And the point of this exercise was to indicate that the traffic counts collected at at least this intersection are lower than they were in 2016 and 2019.
Okay.
These numbers were put into the analysis for the report. As you, we've already established, Mr. Taylor adjusted those numbers going forward.
All right. So my question then is that with the, the purpose of having these numbers is what? Why are these in the report?
These are the basis that they use to generate the, all of the other analysis.
Okay. And so, if the number that went into the report upon which the analyses were based was adjusted up so that it actually exceeded the actual unadjusted counts, then would you agree that there was not a, a, the impact would, is not to present an understated condition?
That would be correct if this analysis was an isolated intersection. If all of the counts were low, then the adjustments to the other intersections could also be wrong.
But you have no, you did not do that, so that's pure supposition.
As I stated, we had the resources to count one intersection.
There seemed to be some confusion a minute ago, so I want to understand, did you hear, did you hear, were you responding by the information you provided in your exhibit 04, now 07? I just want to make sure I'm changing the numbers correctly.
Yes, that's with regard to the traffic regulations?
Yes. Can you quote for me why you believed that, that the applicant had indicated that it was going to change, seek to change weight limits?
The restriction, and if we wanted to get into a drawn-out legal discussion of that...
I'm not. I'm asking you why you were responding, that you, did you hear testimony that we were going to change weight limits?
The testimony that you would be restricting truck movements, which is...
Where were we, do you recall where those restrictions were?
Those would be the right turns, I believe, out of the, your site to force tractor-trailers to turn left towards CR-547.
I'm asking the question of whether we, whether there was testimony, are you responding to an assertion that we testified specifically with regard to changing weight limits?
As I just stated, the testimony was that you were making a truck, restricting truck movements, which hurt...
Where were we, where were we making that restriction? On the public road or on our site? What was the testimony?
Those would be, those would be turning out of your, the applicant's driveways.
So we were proposing construction of improvements on our site? Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Which was also testified to, if the board requested, will be subject to Title 39 so that they can enforce.
On our site?
Correct.
Was, I'm asking your witness if he heard testimony where we stated on the record that we were seeking weight restrictions on any street in the town? It's a yes or no answer?
In the town, in the town in general?
Weight restrictions, no.
Thank you, that's, thank you.
You were requesting truck restrictions, which as I testified before, this order requires that, that a weight limit and a truck restriction are the same thing.
Your interpretation of that requirement?
My interpretation as a traffic engineer and not as an attorney.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, you've been very, very talented, very good audience, all right, let's, let's try to keep this to a proper decorum.
Did you also testify or acknowledge that one means of limiting the movement would be, or restriction would be by length, which does not come within the same, your interpretation of the, the language of the statute?
I am not aware of any restrictions based on length, that's what I testified to earlier, and that I do not know if this particular order would, would apply to length of a vehicle.
Okay. Can we, can I ask what? I'm going to need more interpretation of that. Did you consult with anybody in your design of the concept plan at a county, at the county intersection?
By, who do you mean I consult with?
Other than colleagues in your office, did you speak to anybody about the design of that intersection, the concept plan that you created?
Not outside my office, it was prepared by engineers in my office, we did not discuss it with the county.
Okay, and is it your understanding that this board will be reviewing that, any concept plan?
The ultimate review of that design and approval was with the county, not this board.
And you were present at the county meeting when they requested that we prepare a concept drawing, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
And that we agreed to do that?
I believe, yes, you agreed to do that at that meeting.
So was there any discussion about costs with the county at that meeting, acquisition costs, or who was bearing it?
I do not recall any of that discussion.
And if the county were to do that intersection improvement, would, in other words, if they initiated it as opposed to having a private developer involved in that work, would the same potential taking issues abide?
Provided they designed it to the same design vehicle, yes.
Okay, so that's not as a result of the fact that my client may be funding that improvement?
No, if there, as I say, stated, if they're designing that intersection to accommodate tractor trailers, that's the size of the intersection, in my professional opinion, that's necessary.
Okay, and obviously, the county's consultants may have their own opinion of that, but I guess you made a point of pointing out that there might be taking requirements, those taking requirements are not a result of the applicant funding those, if the county was doing that work, would they also need to do that?
Regardless of who was paying for the project, the, in order to accommodate the roadway, the utilities, and the standard right-of-way width the county would require, there would be property takings.
Okay, and does the county have the right of eminent domain?
I think you're asking a traffic engineer a legal question.
He's been testifying all over, all kinds of expertise, so he might as well throw that in. Based upon work you have previously done for counties, you were a county engineer, were you not traffic engineer?
County traffic engineer, yes.
Does the county, in your experience as the traffic engineer for a county, were you aware of the power of eminent domain that they have authority?
Counties do have the ability to seize property over eminent domain.
Okay, and is the movement of utility poles a normal incident of a road widening, not specific just to this project, but in the ordinary course of widening roadways, in your experience as a traffic engineer?
Yes, it is.
So that's nothing unique or unusual, because my client may be funding this?
No, it speaks to the amount of time required to implement the improvement.
Do you know how long the anticipated build-out of the project is?
Off the top of my head, and I can refer to your study, I believe five years.
And do you know at what point in that development the improvements would be necessitated?
I'd love to know that answer, I'm curious if the county has, has provided that information yet.
Their jurisdiction, I'm sure they'll do what they think is appropriate. The, you referred to, you provided a sketch of where you thought traffic would queue based upon using a 25-foot length for cars, and you said it was 1,350 feet, in what condition was that?
As I testified, that's the evening peak hour, the 95th percentile queue.
With, with or without improvements?
That's without the traffic signal.
Okay, so if the traffic signal is being installed, now you heard testimony that the applicant was willing to undertake the, the funding for that.
No, I believe that your testimony was that you would comply with the county's requirement.
And you, and you testified you were at that meeting and you did, what did the, what was the county?
The county stated that they were going to make installation of the signal a condition of approval.
Okay, so based upon that, is the 1,350 feet of stacking that you have put in the record, regardless of whether it's an accurate number or not, is it what we would anticipate with the project with the installation of the traffic signal?
No, with, it would be less with the installation of the improvements.
How much less, do you know?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, I'm sure it's in your traffic engineer's study.
Okay, so can you just tell us what the purpose was of putting that number into the record after hearing the testimony that it wouldn't be approved without the signal, and acknowledging that that's not a number that results with the signal?
The intent was to recognize that the improvements are going to take time, and that there isn't a clear definition of when the signal is going to be constructed versus when the, the project would be constructed.
That's, I understand why you're, you've testified as to that concern and provided us with your exhibit, that doesn't answer my question, why you provided the number for stacking, which would result if the signal was not installed, when you heard that the installation will be a condition of any approval from the county, as opposed to what the number would be with the installation of the traffic signal?
At this point, there is no definitive commitment to that traffic signal, we don't know when it's going to be constructed, unless you're, your applicant's willing to commit to construction by a certain date.
So the only circumstance that you are, that your purpose in putting in the 1,350 length of stacking was only in the scenario where the build-out was completed for the project, thereby generating the total potential traffic, and the signal was not installed?
That's correct.
That was the only circumstance where you're putting, that's your hypothetical to come up with that number? Okay.
Well, it's your number, just so we're clear.
That number was derived from reports provided by your traffic consultant.
Right, before we heard from the county what their position was with regard to the traffic signal?
I don't think, I don't think there's been a definitive approval from the county and what their definitive requirement is going to be, unless you know something we don't. If you can enlighten, you can enlighten the board as to what the county has required you to do.
I think your witness already testified what the county would require to do, which is they would require a traffic signal at that installation.
No, I think he testified, he heard what the comments were at the meeting, but I don't believe there's been any definitive final resolution from the county, and as we know, boards, review committees can change their minds from one week to the next. So until you have a final approval from the county, and a definitive what's going to take place, who's going to pay for it, and when it's going to be installed, it's very relevant as to the queuing that's going to take place.
Not the queuing that is going to take place, the queuing in what circumstance?
As I stated before, the queuing that would occur upon full build-out of the site without improvements to 547 and Randolph.
Okay. Okay, give me just one second to check what... He asked to take a break so we don't hear, keep you sitting, I just want to go through some additional questions from my...
Well, Counselor, in, in all fairness, because we've other, other items on the agenda, you do have to come back, it's agreed that Mr. Bosson will bring him back, can we hold your questions to the, when you return?
All right, let me just double check if there's enough to make it worth bringing him back, or if we don't really think it's, so let me just, give me one more minute then. Thank you, we'll just hold, we have a few questions that we want to go through, some of his testimony, so since he's going to be coming back, we'll just hold those, and then you'll have to advise us whether you want us, if we decide that we need rebuttal or redirect of our witness, if those would go before we open, so that the public has the benefit of hearing that, I guess we can discuss that.
So what, both of you, what I'd like to do now is, obviously, I have to still open the, this portion to your, for the audience to question him. Do you have any other witnesses beyond this?
No, Chair.
Okay, so I would like to then start to open it up to the public.
Absolutely.
So that the public can then provide testimony.
You mean questions?
Questions.
Questions.
Well, no, first questions, and then if there are no questions, then I would like to open it up to the public, so that they can stop putting some input.
Before we finish cross-examination and rebuttal?
Ms. Gonchar, do you have a strenuous objection to the public offering preliminary comment at the conclusion of this particular witness's testimony? He is coming back, but would you have an objection to the wit, to the public, first asking questions and then potentially offering some comment?
Yes, questions, we have no question about that.
But then following the question, following the questions, if the public were to offer some comment, would you have an objection to that?
Well, I guess the question is whether that means that they'll be coming back for yet another round if they then want to comment on what my witness may say by way of rebuttal, or the additional cross-examination, so...
There would be, at the conclusion of your rebuttal case, another, the final opportunity for public comment, so yes, there would be an additional round of comments.
Well, let's see, we see, you've got questions, let's see where, because you said you're going to about 9:30.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just before you do that.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the objectors' information, was that received by our board professional?
We, we just received it tonight as well, and based on the testimony and them coming back, we're going to review it and be able to discuss it the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, if anyone in the audience, audience would like to come up and ask questions of this witness, it's questions now, all right, we're getting close to when you can offer testimony, but right now, if you have questions of the traffic engineer on what he testified, please step forward to the podium. Please put your name and address on the record.
Sure, Nancy Reichenbecker, R-E-I-C-H-E-N-B-E-C-H-E-R, 41 Brook Road.
And this is questions of him?
Yes, this is questions. So, I heard, um...
Excuse me, could you speak?
You have to speak, you have to speak.
Pam, you need to speak right into the mic.
You only did a study at the, at the one corner, Randolph Road?
Could you move the mic to your mouth, please?
You only did the study at Randolph Road, correct?
My counts were done at the intersection of 547 and Randolph Road, just that one intersection.
Why did you only do the study at that location?
As I mentioned before, where we have a limited, had a limited budget for review of this application.
So if there was a direct competitor of the applicant paying you, then they must not have very deep pockets?
I'm going to let my attorney handle that one.
Yeah, I think you can answer that question, that goes to the same objection we had previously.
Right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to ask questions? Please put your name and address.
Tim Sullivan, 16 Nate Lane. My question is, the attorney for the applicant mentioned that the study was done on a Thursday around Memorial Day, has there been a study, or can the numbers be extrapolated for a Friday, an hour or two before sundown, when that road is heavily traveled, as it is kind of a Lakewood Expressway, and when Route 9 backs up, that's the main way into Lakewood, and the numbers would definitely be skewed. It's a question, I...
Yeah, but see, you're going to be entering facts to the record that we have to swear you in.
I don't know it to be a fact, I know it to be a reality of where I live.
I, I, Steve, I think his question is, have you been able to make a determination based upon the count whether the Friday evening traffic volumes would be heavier, and what would be that, the impact of that?
My counts were only done on that Thursday, we, we did not look at a Friday afternoon simply because we were looking consist, looking for what is considered a typical midweek peak hour volume, not specific to Friday afternoon.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Parisi, 2 Castle Court. I have a procedural question directed for the chairman. I have a procedural question directed for the chairman. At the conclusion of the last meeting, the applicant's planner was taking public questioning, and you called the meeting to a hard stop, but you never closed public questioning of that applicant's planner. And you also said that you wanted to hear from the board's planner what they had to say to the applicant's planner. I thought at the beginning of this meeting that they would have continued with public questioning of the applicant's planner, but they closed their case and we moved right on to the objector. I just want to know procedurally-
Just, just hold on one second, all right? Chris, were you, you were at the meeting, weren't you?
Yes, I was.
Did we, did we suspend and continue the planner testimony?
Not that I recall. They had finished with their planners, was what I recall.
And did I close the public portion of the questioning?
I honestly don't remember off the top of my head.
Chairman, I listened to the video. You did not. You said we're going to come to a hard stop right there because of the time, but public questioning of the applicant's planner was never closed.
I'm presuming you have questions of the planner.
And other people in the public may have as well, as well as maybe the board planner. That's all. It was just a procedural question that I had to ask.
No, that's a, that's a good question.
Ms. Gonchar, at the end of the last hearing, did you, I wasn't here, so I'm not familiar with it, but did you wrap up your case? Did you make a closing statement, or did you, was there some indicia that you were done?
We wouldn't have done a closing statement until after all of the testimony was done, so.
But-
I believe the public was still asking questions of the planner.
I was not facing that way. I have no idea who was behind me. The chairman looked out, and the chairman closed it, so that wasn't our, you know, that wasn't our determination, so.
Did we?
What was going on?
Steve, I'm told that we did not close the public portion of the questioning of the planner.
Hmm.
Just by, by show of hands, is there, who would like to ask questions of the applicant's planner? Yeah, I know that, but I haven't do that.
Right. Just qualify, if you're asking whether we would reopen to allow that, did we be people who hadn't already asked when they had the opportunity?
If I could, just to be fair, to share a little bit of recollection, as I recall, when we carried this to the special meeting, the, I don't believe your planner was going to be available that night, and I think that may be where we lost sight of that to start today. As I recall, because I, Chris did not have the opportunity to opine on the testimony, but I thought when we carried it, we knew that the, and I defer to you to answer that, but I don't think your planner was available for the special meeting.
For December third.
Right.
She was not available, the third was the day we were supposed to-
So I think that may be why we figured we were going to start with the traffic opposition, just to kind of shed light, because as, as I'm looking through my notes, I don't have that we closed the public on, on the planning, and just in thinking, that's how I recall it, was we were carrying it to that special meeting, and due to availability, that's why we, we had indicated this is where we would start.
Right. All right, give me two minutes to talk with my attorney about how we're going to move forward here. All right, here's what we're going to do, is we're going to finish questioning the traffic engineer, and then when the traffic engineer is done, since your planner is here tonight, all right, I would like to open up and continue the public portion of questions for your planner. Bosson, you have any problem with that?
No, that's, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Right, yeah, I-
Do you have-
Hopefully we can get that done.
Well, we're not, you don't have an obligation, I don't think, to go back.
Are we going to, anybody who is already questioned that we're not-
Will be precluded from questioning, yes.
Right. And I think you had done your cross-examination on-
Yeah, yeah, it's only public comments. Public questions, public questions of the-
Questions previously.
Yes.
Right.
You want to formally reopen that, then the, our portion of the hearing remains open?
All right, so if everyone in the public understands this, and I apologize, this was my mistake, is there anyone in the public who would like to ask questions of the traffic engineer right now? Let's get this all done. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that portion of the public session of the questioning of the opposition traffic engineer. We are now going to go back, and I will ask Counselor, Council, and her planner to step up again, and I will reopen the portion of the questions to the applicant's planner, but it is only for people who did not ask questions before we came to the hard stop at the last meeting. Okay, and you're still under, you're still under testimony?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, just if you could put your name for the purposes of the record, if you could, Beth, just provide.
The mic died.
I don't, I don't think it's projected. My name is Elizabeth McManus. And you're previous, she was previously qualified as an expert in the field of planning.
Yes. All right, so now, is there anyone who would like to come up and ask questions?
Excuse me, you could pull that mic on the table closer and use that as well.
That'll do it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Francis Familio, one five seven Lanes Pond Road, Howell.
And you are not a member of HOPE?
No.
And you did not ask questions previously?
Of this person.
Okay.
Okay. There was talk about a four-hundred thousand square foot kind of medical complex. Wouldn't a variance be required if that was to happen on this site, since you're only going for a warehouse space?
I'm not sure if I should use this microphone as well. There was talk by the applicant's traffic engineer about a four-hundred thousand medical office, but that is not what's being proposed. Whether, whether that addition beyond the proposed warehouse would require a variance is not something I've analyzed.
But it could be a possibility, correct?
That is not part of our proposal at this time. It is not part of our proposal.
Okay. That was my question, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come, step forward?
If I can, the gentleman in the back that wanted to ask questions of the planner, how many people raise your hand are going to be asking questions of the planner, so we can gauge? Okay, thank you.
Hello, Joanne D. Leo, ten Station Place. My question is, perhaps I missed something in the testimony. Testimony given regarding the proposed water and septic plans for the project? Or does anybody, can anybody tell me what's going to be provided for that?
Are you talking about stormwater, or are you talking about drinking water?
I'm talking about drinking water and septic as in sewer.
Okay.
I didn't, I, I, maybe I missed it. Okay.
This is not the planner, this is the, that would have been the civil engineer, which was several meetings ago. And Ms. Newman, please refresh me. The applicant is providing both water and sewer service for the site?
Yes, there's public utility extensions to service the warehouse.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Robert Johnson, seven five seven Oakland Road. There's three bridges that surround this property. There's a weight restriction on these three bridges, are you aware of?
I'm sorry, are you a member of HOPE?
No, I'm not.
Oh, he's got removed.
Okay, you are, you were, and you're no longer on it. What's the?
The question, the question-
The three bridges that surround the property, there's a weight restrictions to this? Because these tractor trailers are pretty big, they're, they're going to be weight restrictions. I see a ten-ton weight limit on the one bridge. I'm just, are you aware that there's a weight restriction on these?
I don't think this is a question for the planner.
No, oh.
Thank you.
The bridges don't count?
Well, the bridges do, but this is not her particular expertise.
Okay.
We've had a civil engineer here, and we ju, we had a traffic engineer here, all right?
Is it acceptable to put this facility in a place with three bridges surrounding it? Is that a better question?
Yeah, that's a better question.
The acceptability of the project at this particular like, location is not dependent on the presence of bridges in the surrounding area, instead it's dependent on other factors, principally the zoning.
Okay, but here's a problem, she's a planning, she's part of the planning here. There's three bridges that surround this property, there's only one access in and out of there without going over a bridge.
I'm going to object that, I don't know if that was a question.
Why?
It's a statement, and I don't even know if it's, if he's been sworn. We've already said that the existence of the bridges is not within her expertise. You asked a question, and she answered it.
She didn't answer the, I don't understand why these three bridges aren't an issue. They're failing bridges. I live right there on these street, right next to the facility. That you're proposing.
The applicant's traffic engineer has testified that the majority of the traffic is going to be an origin and destination using 547 to either go up to 195 or to go south to Route eighty-eight or whatever, all right? So there's no anticipation that trucks will be routed over those local bridges.
Okay, okay. Are there going to be any improvements to Route 547, considering there are no shoulders on that road?
Again, yeah, again, this, this is-
Okay, these are-
Was, was brought up and should have been asked of the traffic engineer. I apologize if you weren't here when that testimony happened, but she's not, she's not-
Okay.
Eligible and capable of answering.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all my questions.
Anyone else who would like to ask a question?
Tina Smilik, thirty-three Charles Street, Howell. Basically, as a planner, in your experience, have you ever done a project this size before, worked on a, for a firm?
No, not of this size.
Not of this size?
No.
What is the biggest size project you've ever worked on that deals with warehouse?
I've had a planning testimony for, for a smaller self-storage facility. I've also worked with client municipalities that have engaged with warehousing developers to determine if, if a project was desirable from both the perspective of the developer as well as the municipality. In terms of that size, I believe it was approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet.
Okay, so never this size, so why, what makes you the expert on this?
I have substantial expertise in municipal planning, including but not limited to preparation, interpretation of municipal ordinances, and also how the municipal land use law applies to applications that both do and do not require relief from the planning board.
Okay, but no really expertise on this size. Who's paying you?
The applicant.
Who?
The applicant.
The applicant, which is who?
It's in the record.
I'm asking a question, if you don't know who's paying you.
As sta, it's, as stated on the application, it's the Howell Kennedy Incorporated.
Who, who's, I don't know who's in charge of that. I mean, is that just-
I don't think that's relevant.
None of the company testify.
Well, I figured if they can ask, we can ask. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to ask questions? All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public portion of the questions to the planner. However, Chris, are you prepared to discuss the, what we talked about?
Sure, I can, I do not have any questions for their planner, but I can opine on some of the issues if you would like at this time.
Yes, please.
All right. Um-
These are planning issues.
Yes, so just to refresh-
Are all of your witnesses going to do a summary like this, or is this just?
This is just one specific.
All right, so just to review quickly, you see there are two C variances that the applicant requires, one for not-
Steve, do we need to swear?
Are you providing testimony this evening?
Uh, yes.
Okay, but do you swear from the, any testimony you provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
And just for the record, please spell your name and diff.
I'm Chris Dochney, D.O.C.H.N.E.Y., planner for the board from CME Associates. Business address is one Market Street in Camden, New Jersey. So just to review, there are two C variances and a number of design waivers that are required here of the applicant, which they, they have to show that they meet certain criteria. One variance is for, there's a fifty-foot buffer requirement around the perimeter of the property, in between any residential use or zone. The properties just to the east of the site are within the ARE two zone, which is a residential zone. They do not quite meet that buffer requirement. And the other C variance is for the, as has been discussed, the outdoor storage. Where in between a couple of the buildings, they have the outdoor storage of trailers, which is not in a rear yard as required by ordinance and is not screened as required by ordinance. So just to go over quickly, the requirements that are, have to be proven in order to grant a C variance, there's two C variances, as was testified before. What's usually called the C one is a hardship variance. The testimony that was presented is that this is, they're not calling this a C one variance, there's no hardship. The second C variance is a C two variance, which is sort of known as the flex C. And according to the municipal land use law, there's sort of a five-step test in order to grant a C two variance. And those five steps are, first, you have to show that the variance relates to a specific piece of property, which this does. You have to show that the municipal land use law, its purposes would be advanced by this deviation. Third, you have to show that there is no substantial detriment to the public good. Fourth, you have to show that the benefits of this deviation that's being proposed, which is allowing, for the, for the two of them, allowing the storage to be in a side yard and not screened, and also the reduction in the buffer area, that the benefits by allowing this would outweigh any potential detriments. And then fifth, you also have to show there's no substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Now, I think I can opine here, the, the intent of the zoning ordinance in these is pretty clear. For outdoor storage as well as for parking, so that's a couple of the design waivers they need, the intent is to have storage or parking be as minimally visible as possible. That's why they require landscaping around a parking lot, that's why the governing body decided to allow outdoor storage, but only in a screened rear yard area, so that it's not visible, because the impacts of these things to the community can have a substantial Same thing with the buffer, is to minimize visual impacts as well as sound, lights, dust, all sorts of things between an industrial use such as this and adjacent residential areas. That's the purpose of the fifty-foot buffer, which does allow for, there are four different ways to meet that fifty-foot buffer, and you only have to meet two of the four. They have, I guess, testified that they don't want to meet those and that they feel this is a better position. Let's see, one more thing I think I should clarify here, to put it a little more simply of those, aside from just that five-step test, the reason this is sort of referred to as the flex C variance, as you're proposing a, a preferred zoning alternative, is what I've heard it termed many times. I don't recall off the top of my head which court case that terminology comes from, but essentially you can grant a C two variance if the applicant has shown that what they are proposing is a better alternative than strict performance of the zoning requirements. So in order for you to grant those variances, you would have to agree with them that the proposed outdoor storage of trailers in a side yard, the way they're showing it, is a better alternative than having them in a rear yard and be screened, as well as this 50-foot buffer, that what they're proposing is better than meeting the requirements of the ordinance. And same thing for the multiple design waivers.
All right, yeah, hold on one second.
There is a, I'm sorry. All right, I'll just go over the design waivers really quick. Now, here, they are exceeding the maximum foot candles in terms of lighting. They have no landscaping around their garbage and recycling enclosure. Uh, the tree management plan is not at the proper scale. They do not have sidewalks. The other, okay, the parking areas have no separations from the buildings by bollards, curbs, or other protective devices. Uh, corner lots shall have nowhere than two freestanding signs or wall signs. They're proposing 18 wall signs and five freestanding signs. Uh, no off-street loading and maneuvering areas shall be located in any front yard. They do have loading areas in a front yard. Um, only on Building E, I believe that is. Uh, loading spaces are required have a minimum length of 60 feet. They have stalls of 55 feet proposed. Uh, they're technically required to have publicly, publicly usable site furnishings such as benches, tables, bike racks, or other pedestrian amenities. They're proposing none. Parking lots which are visible to the public shall be surrounded by a visibly impervious screen, hedge, or wall at least three feet in height. They're not proposing any such screening, other than the general landscaping around the perimeter of the site, which will be broken up by the, the numerous driveways that they have proposed. Uh, and then the architectural design requirements for all non-residential construction, they're not supposed to have a blank wall of an uninterrupted, uninterrupted length exceeding 50 feet. Uh, I believe each of those warehouses are essentially large blank walls, much, well in excess of 50 feet.
I, I just wanna clarify, there is a couple of things that have, have been changed. Just to clarify for the record, I think we're still waiting for, this is at the initial hearing, Mr. Tennant House have requested that we get some IES calculations for the, for the ordinance to show where the overage was. Um, as it relates to the roofline offsets of the building, they did agree to comply. As was previously testified about the protective barrier, they were gonna do that in the architecture of the building, um, and then I think we were down to the trees. So I think the design waiver that Chris had gone through, the lighting, because we haven't seen that comparison or that analysis, the screening around the refuse area, um, they did agree to provide some additional landscaping around Building E to provide some foundation enhancements previously, sidewalk which was previously mentioned, um, and then the number of signs, the loading stall size, and the tree waiver.
Okay, yeah, I apologize, but I was not here for the first twenty minutes. So that had already been covered then. Anything that they have agreed to with the dress, they would not technically need the design waivers.
I think just also.
I have a question.
Yes?
How do they prove to you as a planner and a retro engineer that the structural, structural, architectural in place of the bollards is going to prevent a car from going through? What technical details do they give you to prove this, that they're, they're saying this? How do you know?
So, if I could, Mr. Schneider, I believe what the testimony was, with these were masonry block walls, and I think that that went to part of this, but that's under the construction code, so it's a condition of this approval. That's what they've represented on the record. So as they submit their detailed architectural plans, that component would have to be in there and would have to satisfy the requirements of the engineering department here, as well as your construction department.
Thank you.
If I may, just to clarify, there was block, but we also had, um, testimony that there would be steel reinforcement, um, and there was actually testimony that the steel beams would be spaced so that they were net, close enough together that a vehicle could not go through them. So in addition to the concrete block, which went up a certain distance, there were also structural supports behind that, steel supports, which would be spaced out to prevent the vehicle from moving through, even if the concrete itself wasn't adequate to, to stop it. And that's in the, the testimony, the architect.
All right, can I ask a favor? Can we take a 10-minute break here? All right? All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please take your seats.
The planning board will now reconvene.
All right, Counselor, um, yeah, I'm gonna carry on. We have other items that we have to take care of on the agenda, all right? I'd like to carry this application to the January 16th meeting, and you would be the first application on after the re-logs.
Our consultants are available, and I believe I am too.
Okay. Mr. Bosson?
Yes, Chair. January 16th?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we, we confer, that's, that's perfect.
Okay.
I'll have my, my traffic engineer will come back for, my traffic engineer will come back for any, uh, additional cross.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Steve, make the announcement, please.
Okay.
Can I have an extension time on the application, please?
The room is at 16.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, for making an announcement for case number SP 1052, Monmouth Commerce Center, the application we're hearing this evening, we're carrying this public hearing on notice to the board's scheduled meeting for January 16th, 2020. That's next year, January 16th, 2020, 7:00 PM in this room. Uh, there'll be no further mailed or published notice. So we're carrying this application, Monmouth Commerce Center, January 16th, 2020, 7:00 PM, this room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh.
Peter is, uh, Peter's outside, he's locked down.
All right, Peter, whenever you're ready. All right, Peter, whenever you're ready. We doing land use or master plan first?
Um, I'd like to start with the master plan reexamine first, if that's okay?
It's your show, be my guest.
All right, thank you. So, um, we prepared the master plan reexamination report, um, and the companion, uh, land, land use plan amendment documents, both dated November 18th, 2019, uh, in accordance with the municipal land use law. The master plan reexamination report essentially provides recommendations for a number of different, um, potential minor zoning changes, uh, as far as different things that have been observed since 2017 was actually the last master plan reexam. And, um, so it was essentially, uh, providing recommendations to take the first steps toward the implementation of those, those, uh, items, which I'll go through in a little, little bit more detail in a minute, and then also provided some new recommendations for different types of, of adjustments to, um, zoning where there was, historically, there probably should have been a zoning change, it's just kinda getting things caught, uh, up to date, essentially. And, uh, in accordance with the municipal land use law, this report contains, um, essentially a review of major problems and objectings, objectives, rather, related to land development. Uh, it was focused on the 2017 master plan reexamination report, but it also reviewed all the different master plan reexams that have occurred over the years, as well as the, the last comprehensive master plan. And, uh, really, just, it just, uh, provides an assessment of, um, which of those goals have been achieved and which are, um, relevant, which are no longer applicable, and, uh, and that sort of thing. And also in accordance with the municipal land use law, it contains a section of, that pertains to the extent to which problems and objectives have been reduced or have increased. And again, it's focused on, um, what has occurred in terms of the previous master plan recommendations, um, and what's occurred to date, um, as far as addressing them and whether or not they're relevant. It also contains demographic characteristics, employment characteristics, housing, a section on affordable housing that's, uh, designed to be, um, complimentary to the, uh, 2019 housing plan element and fair share plan, to make sure those documents are aligned. And, um, in, in addition, and this is the more interesting part, of course, is the specific changes recommended for the master plan and/or development regulations, which is what I had mentioned, uh, previously about the, the new recommendations. So that begins on page 32, and, um, there are, I believe, um, well over 20 different recommendations, actually over 30. So I could just give you some representative examples and, and some highlights, just to, to give you a, a sense of, um, the types of recommendations in here. So there's actually only one new goal that's proposed to be, uh, incorporated into the master plan. Um, and again, this is the reexamination report, the land use plan amendment actually incorporates all these same recommendations into the master plan through the land use plan amendment vehicle. So the goal that's proposed to be incorporated is to encourage new business and industries to locate along the township's highway corridors, which will grow the economy of Howell and provide new services and potential employment opportunities for residents. In addition to that, there's a number of specific land use recommendations, which I had, had mentioned previously. Um, one example is, um, that the ord, it recommends that the ordinance be amended to include appropriate conditional use standards for auto repair services and auto body uses in the HD1 zone. So those are uses that were identified. There's no conditional uses or use standards, um, at this point in time. So it was a logical thing to include those, so that there's some parameters for future development applications. Similarly, trade contractor businesses, um, in that case, it sets forth a definition for trade contractor business, which, uh, is not currently in the ordinance, and then provides a recommendation for that to be a permitted conditional use in the HD2, HD3, SED, and SED light districts. And, um, what I'm gonna get to in, in a minute is the SED light district is one of the few districts that's been proposed to be brought into existence, um, as, as part of this reexam. And then, uh, similarly, landscape business, same approach, a definition has been established and, uh, conditions have been established. Then on pages 30 and 39, there's parking requirements that have been established for uses that were identified in the code, but there had been no parking standards explicitly stated up until this point. Um, there's recommendations for parking standards. Just, uh, one example is daycare facilities. There, there's no standard currently. The recommended standard would be one space per employee plus one space per, uh, facility vehicle, and then three spaces per thousand square feet of service area. And it's, it covers a wide range of uses, but we tried to be comprehensive and make sure every use has a parking standard. Then, um, moving forward from there, I guess, to get to the key, um, the, the zones that are proposed to be, uh, established. The SED light district, um, is a, a new zone that's proposed to be established, which is essentially taking the SED district and removing the more intensive uses such as contractor yards and certain of the, the most intensive manufacturing uses to make it more of an intermediate level of intensity. Um, it's a slightly, slightly lighter zone, and, um, essentially you can see on pages 44 and 45, the, the proposed uses. We've also included some newer uses such as, um, microbreweries and craft distilleries, just to kind of, you know, uh, those are essentially, they can be virtually retail, but they're also sort of light industry, so they're, they're a nice fit for this type of zone. Um, in addition, this, uh, master plan reexam recommends the establishment of Free Wood Acres Commercial District, which, uh, would run north of the intersection of Route 9 to 195, approximately a half mile through that neighborhood where sewer, sewer connections and water service is currently being implemented and planned. Um, the, the vision there, which, um, this just provides a recommendation for the ordinance, it doesn't quite get into the level of detail of specific standards, but the vision would be like a, a neighborhood mixed-use commercial district that is compatible with Route 9, enhances development opportunities there for commercial uses along the roadway, and, um, and, you know, the, uh, development along those lines in addition. And lastly, as far as the, the new zones go, a military zone is recommended for the, um, the military base. Very simply, um, that's just proposed to be zoned that way, because it's for the, um, at least the near and probably foreseeable future, it's probably gonna continue to be military, and then at such time, you know, if it ever is to be made available for another type of use, it could be revisited at that time. There are, um, in addition to those, a, a total of 16 proposed zoning map amendments that are either, you know, for the most part, they're using the existing zoning and, um, making some, some adjustments. A couple of them involve the SED light zone that I had mentioned previously, and one is, of course, the military zone, and also one is the Free Wood Acres Zone. So on the screen that, um, is in front of you, uh, we're, to, to my left in the case of the projector, we have Key Map 1. The proposals are, are numbered 1 through, um, actually, I'm sorry, 1 through 19, and uh, what you, what you see here is the Route 33 corridor and some other areas south of it. The rezonings are focused around the Route 33 corridor and a select few, um, rezonings that tie in with the rehabilitation obligation of the housing plan. So for the most part, they're in the northern portion of the township. Um, what you see is proposal 1, 2, 3, and 4 along Route 33. They're all geared toward taking, um, the various sort of hodgepodge of, of zoning that's, that's accumulated over the years along Route 33 and unifying it under 1 HD3 type of zoning along the corridor to provide sort of a cohesive vision and cohesive type of, of development along that corridor. Then, um, let's see, proposal 17 is proposed to be rezoned to, um, bear with me one moment, to ARE6 from SED, and so, kind of along, along much different lines, but also to recognize existing conditions and, and what would make sense for the area. The, it's proposed to go from SED to ARE6 because there's a significant amount of environmental, environmentally sensitive land there with stream corridors. So there's these different types of zonings, just to really, uh, you know, try to, uh, to align the zoning in, in a way that makes sense, um, at this time. Proposal 18, um, since it's in, in view there, is, uh, that zone's proposed to go from HD2 to SED, and it's actually surrounded, um, in large part by SED, so that would just be, um, a, a case of making a zone that's appropriate for that change, uh, to be the same as the contiguous surrounding SED zone. And, uh, Key Map 2 shows additional area of, additional length of the Route 33 corridor, uh, proposals 5, 6, and, um, I think there's another one coming up on, on the next panel. 5 and 6, though, are again, proposed to take, um, HD2 and ARE6 zoning and rezone it HD3 to make the corridor zoning consistent. You can see a little bit of proposal 8, which is the military zone. Uh, there's a map coming up, uh, in a minute, that's gonna have more detail on that. Um, one second. And then, um, proposal 7 is proposed to go from ARE6 to SED light, um, and then proposal 7A is proposed to go to, um, SED. And the reason that that's a tiny little snippet is, uh, SED surrounds it, and it's actually an existing, uh, industrial property, so it'll just make it conforming. Uh, this map is essentially dedicated to the, the military zone, that's, that's, uh, recommended. Um, it, it depicts the base, and, um, you can see the other rezonings, uh, to the south beneath it. Key Map 3 shows a, a rezoning where, um, the property in proposal 9 is proposed to be rezoned from, um, bear with me one moment, HD3 to ARE1. Those properties contain predominantly single-family homes, so, uh, the thinking was it would be more appropriate for them to have a, um, residential zoning rather than a commercial zoning. Uh, the properties, uh, contained within proposal 10 are adjacent to the RRC, and, um, just due to the configuration and, and the adjacent uses, it made more sense to have those rezoned as RRC. And then, uh, proposals 11 and 11A, um, in the case of proposal 11, those are existing small, single-family lots. Um, in that case, it would be more appropriate for those lots to be rezoned from SED to R50. And, uh, proposal 11A is, uh, a proposal to rezone a lot from SED to HD3, uh, mostly 'cause it's undersized, but it is a commercial use. Okay, and we're almost done. Uh, Key Map 4, proposal 12, is a proposal to rezone from ARE2 to SED light. Um, let's see here, and, um, in this case, it's, it's really the, the only case where we have an SED light overlay, so the underlying ARE2 properties reserve their rights and retain their rights to, uh, their commercial zoning, or their residential zoning, rather. Um, in addition, the overlay provides an alternative zoning scheme for commercial properties to, to provide applications to come in under the SED light zoning. And then, uh, proposals 13 and 14 are, uh, proposal to go from, um, let's see here. And then Proposals 13 and 14 are a proposal to go from, let's see here, to go from ARE3 to R3, and to go from ARE3 to NC, respectively. And essentially, it's just a adjustment of zoning south of Farmingdale, where there's existing light commercial and residential uses to make those lands more compatible. Key Map 5. Key Map 5 shows the Free Wood Acres proposed rezoning. The darker green area, Proposal 15A, is the rezoning to the Free Wood Acres Zone that's proposed, which would be a, it would overwrite the existing HD zoning. And a bit of it's also HD1 to the north. And then the Proposal 15B is an overlay of Free Wood Acres zoning, which would overlay over the R50, and that would provide an ability for interested property owners and developers to have slightly deeper lots coming off of Route 9. It just captures a little bit more of land area, really improves the potential developability of the parcels in the area. And I think this is our last map. Thank you. This map, Key Map 6, is a proposed rezoning from RAC to ARE1. And the rationale behind this is the vast majority of those lots, highlighted in blue, are existing single-family homes, and a zoning of ARE1 would be more appropriate than a zoning of RAC. And that actually concludes the content of the recommendations in the master plan reexamination report. If you'd like, I could jump right into the land use plan element amendment. I don't know if we need separate motions.
I think we should do it separately.
Sounds good.
All right. Does the board have any questions, or Peter? Seeing none, I will open it up. Does the public have any questions?
Tina Smilak, 33 Charles Street. Who makes all these changes and brings them to you? Like, where do they come from?
Well, just by way of procedure, you have to reexamine your master plan throughout time.
Who does that?
Well, Peter's a planner on behalf of the township.
Okay.
He could probably walk through how the recommendations come through, which are the basis of the report, and then the council then is referred the report, and then they can choose to act on those recommendations in there by way of passing ordinances.
Has the council seen this report yet?
This is the, the master plan is a document of the planning board, so the planning board has it introduced here. There's a public hearing at this venue, and then it would be referred to the council.
Okay. I mean, this seems like a lot to go on. When did they, when did they get this master, this stuff to review?
The planning board?
This whole, this whole plan that you have? When did they get a copy of it, the planning board?
Well, this is the, basically, the result of about nine or 10 months of analysis and collaboration. One of the things that we do when we're brought on board to prepare master plan reexam is we want to really interact with the key stakeholders, being township staff, members of the master plan subcommittee. We met probably five or six times.
I keep seeing it canceled, so.
We, yeah, we did meet probably at least five times. It may even have been more than that. And we went through every recommendation, all the, you know, every lot that you saw on the maps, we actually deliberated in some detail. And then it was all informed by, information collected by township staff over the past two years since 2017, since the last reexam. So it was a lot of thought and, you know, just careful, fine tuning went into the master plan reexam.
Okay, but who here, how long have they been able to look at this as a whole, the planning board?
About a week. About a week. I think we received electronically.
Received that electronically a week ago?
Yeah, the municipal land use law requires it to be provided 10 days prior to the hearing. It was provided, I think, 13, 14 days prior.
Okay, so everybody had a chance to look over it right now and...
That's correct.
Okay. And these master plan subcommittee meetings, are they, are public allowed to attend those?
They are. They're publicly advertised.
You're allowed to attend it, but you can, you don't have any input into it.
No, but you can hear everything that goes on in them?
Yep, you can sit with us.
Okay. And then we can see everything you're seeing?
Yes, but you can't take it home with you.
No, I'm not, but we can see it, we can look at it.
Yep. It's usually the fourth Thursday of the month.
Okay. I just think this is a lot to go on for, you guys only getting together for five times, and it just seems like a lot, so.
So what Peter didn't mention is that the master plan subcommittee, all right, has made a recommendation to the board, all right? And it's, I'm part of that subcommittee, all right? So we're, if you will, the boots on the ground, all right? That we go through the hard nitty-gritty to come up with this. I don't think everyone wants to get into all the details of how we arrived, this lot's going to be covered and that one's not, all right? That's why we have the subcommittee.
Okay. I would just think something, it was something I'd be interested in because everything that's going on in town and how things are getting passed and how things are going, and I don't think we've had, our master plan hasn't really been updated for how long in total? Like, we haven't had a total master plan update for how long?
But it doesn't work that way.
There's elements to the master plan.
Like 15, 20 years ago, didn't you put out in a whole group of people to oversee the master plan, or you just do elements at each time?
When was the original master plan, 1994?
1994, but it's been updated consistently in accordance with the MLUL since then.
And there were ones prior to that, but they were much smaller.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter, can I ask you a question about the Earl property? Because I saw that it's being changed to a military zone.
Yeah.
Has there been any type of discussions amongst, to acquire some of that?
No, Chief, the reason why, and stop me if I'm wrong, the only reason why that's done is if at some future point Earl decides to abandon that property, all right, we have it, that we've designated it for something. We can always go back and change that.
But what I'm saying is that there's a lot of consideration for the existing, right now, that can be switched over to more of a, a more of a business use. You have a large parcel on 33 that is the military property, which I do not think can use for anything. Has there any, has there been any type of conversations for us to possibly acquire that, that land for our use?
I could tell you, when I was on the governing body, we had conversations with them, and there was no interest, but that was, yeah. As a matter of fact, we also implemented where they would be more engaged of what's being developed around that area, because they did have concerns of the security and other issues around that base, but...
They actually, they actually issued a letter telling us that they didn't want any residential homes being built within a certain parameter of the, of Earl. So they actually are prohibiting, in their minds, some things that we're doing, you know, they don't want any more homes being built.
I think they call it an impact zone for them.
For a matter of safety.
I mean, they're revitalizing Fort Monmouth now and all those communities in that area of Ten Falls. She was very happy to keep now, Little Silver, they're benefiting now from that former military land.
Right, but that's former military. It's an abandoned base.
Correct.
And Earl isn't.
Earl is not. Earl's active.
Well, Earl has definitely downsized. I mean, this is a conversation for a long time, but it's something that we definitely should be considering. That's a large tract of land, a major highway that could be available for more of a business use.
Yeah, I know there's conversations, but so far, they actually seem to be prohibiting us from going further, for the impact zone, as they put it.
Yeah, and as, when I send out links for applications, if there's any within Earl's purview, I have to send it to them as well.
Yes.
They have to get noticed on all these applications.
Joan Osborne, 28 Peronia Street. What is exactly that you're acting on tonight? Are you passing, adopting this, or what is the action being taken?
Steve?
Yeah, it's the, would be an adoption of both the land use plan element as well as the master plan reexamination report.
Okay, so right now, you've only covered the report?
Right now, Peter's only gone through one of the two reports.
Okay, so after this is adopted, the next step is, it goes to the council to adopt it? And this is done only every two years?
The council doesn't adopt.
The council doesn't have to adopt it. It's a planning board document. It's just referred to the council.
Okay. And what is the reason for the referral?
Yeah, the council, okay, the planning board is in charge of planning in the town, but the council's in charge of adopting zoning ordinances. So, but the zoning ordinances have to be based on the guidance and planning prepared by this board. A governing body can't just come up with an ordinance out of thin air. It has to have some planning rationale and support, which is why these two planning documents exist.
Okay.
So these form the basis of rezonings going forward.
So if you look at Earl, for example, it was recommended to be zoned military zone. By passing this, that zone doesn't exist.
Until the council creates an ordinance.
Right, it's a recommendation, the council can then proffer an ordinance to rezone that to military zone.
Right. Okay, so this only happens every couple of years, every two or three years?
Well, under the law, the town, the planning board has to do it every 10 years. It used to be every six years. They expanded to every 10 years, but towns are more proactive than that, and Howell's more proactive than that. And this is, it's been two years since the last reexamination.
Okay, so worst case, they could wait from this point another 10 years before they look at rezonings again?
Well, rezonings are different. This is the master plan reexamination. Rezoning is, that's, the governing body takes care of that.
Okay, so this type of report, it could be 10 years before there's another one done with all the recommendations?
Correct.
Okay. And in doing this report, did you have any meetings with the Shadtree Commission?
We didn't. I imagine, from what I understand, I think township staff had interacted with a number of different bodies within the town, but I can't speak for that directly.
Okay, what about the Farmland Preservation Committee?
This is a land use plan element. It's narrowly focused on land use ordinance amendments, like the farmland plan. If it was a comprehensive land use plan element update, we would definitely want to touch on all those different topics. This is a very narrowly focused reexamination.
But don't the zones get created, or recommendations about changes to the zone take into account farmland areas that you may want to preserve, such that you would want to contact that commission and see what they think is important?
This, again, this is very specific. There's the farmland preservation plan element, which deals specifically with that, and then the larger land use plan deals with all different types of land uses in the town. Those would be the more appropriate place. And reexam's and land use plan element amendments can be very focused, and that's the case for this report.
And just, I'll ask the question, but I know the answer. You didn't meet with anyone from Environmental Commission to talk about these recommendations or any input, didn't receive any input from them, did you?
We didn't receive any correspondence directly.
Okay. And this report that you've issued, is it online? Is it available for anyone other than the people on this panel to review before tonight's meeting?
It's, I know it's on file with the township. I don't know if it's been posted to the website.
No. So no one from the town that's not on the planning board has been able to see this before this being?
Yes, the council's seen it.
Okay, well...
So this hearing was publicly advertised, so...
Right, but if you don't get to see the document before the meeting...
The document was available for review.
It was in my office for over 10 days, and anybody could have come in and looked at it.
Okay, but it's not online?
It's not put online until after it's adopted.
Okay. Now, in going through this process and in light of the application that we were on earlier tonight, was there any consideration at all made about having warehouse uses become conditional uses such that you could impose some type of restriction on how much can be sent or set on environmentally valuable land, like this application for Monmouth Commerce Center? Because if we're not going to be doing this for maybe two or three more years, and we see warehouse application after warehouse application coming through, you know, you've got a lot of SED zones where it's pretty much, they can do anything they want, I would really urge that you do something now and not wait another two or three years before Howell is covered in warehouses with a million trucks coming down the road. I mean, I think this is your opportunity, and this application has been going since, oh, probably last April, and this review of the master plan or the reexamination should be taking that into account.
Good evening, Mark Preesi, 2 Castle Court.
Yeah, before you start, thank you for bringing up that issue on Monmouth Corporate Center.
You're welcome, Chairman. And all due respect, I didn't want to put you in any compromising position. I just wanted to make sure that the record was clean.
I agree with you.
That's all, that's all. Okay, all right, I appreciate that, thank you. My question is, if the planning board does approve these recommendations tonight, do these, all these proposed changes, do these zones change officially tonight?
No, that's what I was trying to explain. That can only be done by way of ordinance. So the ordinance would, so this then is the master plan document. Should the council want to act on any of the recommendations in this report, an ordinance would have to go on first reading. It would then be referred to the planning board for consistency purposes with the master plan, and then there would be a second reading, which is a public hearing at the governing body level.
Okay, thank you. And it would be at that time, then the township would notice property owners within 200 feet of the zoning change?
No. That's a yes or no. It's more complicated than that. Ordinarily, if you're changing the classification of a zone by way of an introduced zoning ordinance, you would have to notice the property and the property owners 200 feet around it. However, under the municipal land use law, if the recommended zoning change is identified in a reexamination report, mailed notice is not required. So that's my wishy-washy lawyer answer for yes, notice is required until it's not required. And if this, again, to just say it more simply, if the recommended, if the ordinance was recommended by way of this document, mailed notice is not required. Even if you own the property that's being rezoned.
I appreciate the explanation. Is the board under any time constraint to vote on this matter tonight, prior to the end of the year, or is this something that can be tabled?
That's the board's decision.
Okay. My recommendation would be, if it's not urgent to vote on that tonight, to maybe table it for 30 days, a little bit more public notice about it and allow, you know, public to review it. I understand that maybe by law, they've been allowed 10 days, but for something that maybe not be revisited for another 10 years, maybe allowing people a little bit more time to review it, so that if public wants to come and, you know, has some pertinent questions to ask, that they're afforded a little bit more time. That's all, just a recommendation. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the master plan reexamination report to the public. Where do I go, Steve? Do I have to open it up for testimony, or can we just move to a vote?
Well, is there, is there anybody in the public that wants to present any witnesses or offer any substantive testimony, recommendations, alterations, et cetera? This is your opportunity?
All right. Seeing none, we'll close that. So it's a motion to approve?
Adopt the proposed reexamination report.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Mr. Preesi's comment about delaying. Excuse me, Chief, can you turn your mic? You can't do that.
I'm sorry about that. Better? Okay. I just want to just touch upon what you asked about delaying it. Any concerns that he has can be brought up at the council meeting when it goes before a vote. So between now and then, would this go before the next council meeting? For an ordinance?
Again, Chief, that, this document is strictly a planning board document. The council, it'll be referred to the council for their review, and hopefully, they would be informed and guided by the recommendations when they propose rezonings, but the council doesn't act on it. The council just uses it as its planning reference.
They adopt it?
No. The planning board adopts it, and the governing body should be using this as kind of the guide path towards rezoning and amended zonings going forward.
So this doesn't work like an ordinance, where they would require two readings and it'll become official?
No.
So with us, then it becomes official?
Yes. Yes.
So I think another way to say it is, this is just a blueprint for the council to make decisions, but they don't even have to accept any of these recommendations. So that's why it's a planning board document. We're just saying, this is what they should take in consideration, but they don't need to take any consideration.
And Chief, just to clarify, because it was like just your last question there, it doesn't rezone any of these properties?
Correct. Just a blueprint.
But the way, the way it works is that if the government body were to introduce an ordinance, rezoning some properties, and then it comes for this board for referral review, this board would say, wait a minute, Council, some of what you're asking is inconsistent with our master plan. And then you would identify those inconsistencies. And then you would identify those inconsistencies, send the ordinance back to the council, who can then decide to just go forward, and then they would explain why they're adopting an ordinance inconsistent with your master plan, the reasons for that, or they could amend and follow your master plan. It's up to the governing body at that point.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Mr. Durado.
I'm going to abstain. I didn't really review this at all.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's one. Peter, you want to do the land use element one?
Sure, yeah. And this will be much, much faster, because essentially, for the land use plan element amendment, which is dated November 18, 2019, the master plan reexamination that we had just considered, that recommends that the recommendations, you know, for all the different things I described, but I guess specifically, and most importantly, the master plan goal that I read into the record and the different types of rezonings, that they be reflected in the land use plan element. And so essentially, this land use plan element, it contains all the same recommendations, just to basically complete that required MLUL step, so that the land use plan element is officially amended, and it reflects the recommendations of the master plan reexamination report. So the two documents are consistent. And essentially, the land use plan element was most recently adopted in 2005. Number of amendments have occurred since then, in 2006, 2007, 2010, 11, 13, twice in 2014, 2016, and 2017. So the township is very proactive. There's a lot of, you know, it's a living document, and it's certainly keeping pace with current needs. So this is another amendment to that document. Unless you'd like me to get into any of the recommendations again, it's actually literally the identical recommendations. It's just completing a statutory step as per the municipal land use law. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Board have any questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public have questions? Seeing none, I'll close it. Anyone in the public would like to come up and testify? Seeing none, we'll close that. All right, can I have a motion that adopting the land use plan element? For you to adopt this land use element. Second?
Second.
Mr. Durado.
I'm abstaining.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And before we adjourn here, I would just like to personally thank Peter for all the effort that he put in in preparing these two documents, and more importantly, putting up all my crap, what go go for these documents. So, thank you, Peter. These are outstanding products.
I apologize for not having...
It's okay.
And just, I know, chairman, you normally would, just to extend the gratitude to the subcommittee members, and I'm sure the township officials that worked on this as well.
Absolutely.
As a past chairman of the master plan, I know how much work goes into this, so I also thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? You're nuts. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.